Y'all ready to go, Heather? All right, we'll do it. If you would, please stand with us as we say the pledge and have an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we thank you for today. We thank you for another opportunity to be here, Lord, and to to serve you and to serve the citizens of Walton County. I pray that you'll just give us wisdom and help us lead and guide us to make the right decisions here tonight, Lord. I ask these things in your name, and amen. We don't have no minutes tonight, right, Karen? That was a quick meeting, quick turnaround, so. As far as announcements, just remind everybody, if you haven't already done so, to turn off or silence your cellphones. Try to limit interruptions. Don't think we have no problem. Hopefully, going to nine o'clock tonight, we should be okay there. Kristin, do you have anything?
We do have one request for a continuance. That's item number three under the quasi judicial set of agenda items, the hit and drive abandonment.
Yes, five on our agenda.
And that is to continue to December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's it.
First item. No, we didn't have any minutes tonight.
Okay. The first item we have on the agenda is legislative item. This is part of the comprehensive plan update project, and we are requesting to transmit an amendment to the comprehensive plan that would strike the glossary entirely. What we're trying to accomplish is one glossary for the code and the land development code, and for that glossary not to be repetitive of any other set of definitions that are in the code. So we have one definition in one place. So that is what you see before you. There's really no huge substantive changes here, but there's some combining where we had to pick one, that kind of stuff, and this first item is the actual transmittal.
Commissioners, any questions of staff on this? Just take public comment first. Okay. Ms. Coy Bowman.
Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. I've not had an opportunity to read the extremely long land development code, and so I'm not exactly sure what parts of this you are editing and changing. My computer just won't do those little links, and I'm not that tech savvy. I've got a lot of other reading to do, but what I have managed to get into is the part on the land development code that says you're only supposed to be building fifty single-family homeless a year, that you're supposed to-
Ms. Bowman, do you have anything on this item? Because this is, that's not related to this.
Okay.
This is just definitions.
Just definitions. No, I haven't, I haven't, you know, it's extremely long and wordy, and I actually do have a life other than coming down here and schooling y'all. So I'm just really nervous when I hear that you want to change definitions of things, because it seems to me like when you released this land, you were given a specific set of rules on what you could and could not build, and everybody agreed, and then all of a sudden something would happen that wasn't supposed to happen, and and somebody'd say, oh, well, we had a meeting about it, and we applied a variance and all this-
Ms. Bowman, all we're doing on this item here is moving things, putting sets of definitions all into the same place where there's not two different sets of definitions to confuse people.
Right.
To make it much easier to read. That way, you won't have quite as much reading to do in the future, because you won't have to read it twice.
Okay. I guess what my point is, is that what's the point of having a set of rules if you can just go then change it? What's the point of having something in writing if you can just white it out? What's the point of using words when you're just going to change the definition of words? Like, we're living in an is-is society. Like, we had a president change the definition of a word just by saying it twice. And everything that you've done here in the last twenty, forty, fifty years has just been a manipulation of words. And, and that's, that's why I don't like to hear that you're going to start changing the definitions of things.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Close public comments, commissioners? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two.
Mr. Chairman, this is the companion amendment, which is a request to approve an ordinance that adds the new definitions to the land development code.
Do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this, Ms. Bowman?
Same comment.
Same in common, okay. Anybody else? We'll close public comments, commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four. Kara Lake.
Good evening. This is a-
You what?
Swearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Quasi judicial.
It is quasi, I'm sorry.
Thank you. This is a major development order application submitted by Nautilus Civil Engineers. The proposal is for the construction of forty-four residential townhomes and neighborhood amenities, including a pool and bathhouse on plus or minus nine point four-two acres. The property is currently impacted by an existing man-made pond that will be enhanced and utilized in stormwater retention. A compatibility analysis was completed on the property, and we believe that the development is appropriate and concur with that conclusion. We did have some comments, but everything has been addressed by the applicant at this time. We may have some additional comments from South Walton Fire when they complete their review of the project, but all of the other comments have been closed out and taken care of by the applicant with re-submittal.
Okay.
Okay. I believe the applicant's here, if there's any additional questions there.
All right. Anybody have any questions of staff before we move on?
Good evening, Commissioners. Curtis Smith with Nautilus Civil Engineers. As Kelly's already mentioned, it's forty-four unit townhome development on a parcel that has an existing man-made lake that was dug, I believe sometime in the eighties. The parcel was planned for both multifamily and single-family back in the early two thousands. I believe at one time it actually went all the way through, and probably some fees weren't paid or something to really finalize it, so it never finished before the recession. What we're proposing is very similar to what the multifamily was back then. The only difference being it was a condo then, and now we're actually doing platted townhome units. Our compatibility analysis looked at everything around, and the main, the main, I guess, factor that we drove home on that is just south of this is that big commerce park, PUD, that came through several months ago. That one has some pretty dense apartments and things on it. This is quite a bit less dense than that was, a little bit more dense than Whispering Lake, which is a major single-family development that's on Veterans Road currently. So it's really kind of a transitional parcel between those two, the really dense commerce park to this, and then to the single-family platelots. If anybody has any questions about it, I can answer any detailed technical questions.
It looks like you're quite, quite a bit below what's actually authorized as far as density.
Correct. The density on these is allowed for eight units per acre, and we've proposed four point six-seven, I believe, thereabouts. And that's really just the nature of the property, you know. It's got such a large man-made lake on it. There's, we don't want to get into trying to mess with the lake. It's a, it's a great feature, and the owners want to keep that.
Ma'am, how can you enhance that? Is there any enhancement?
We're going to add some aerators to it. We're going to add two aerators and also a fountain to it to make it both aesthetically pleasing. The second thing on the aerators is because this was dug as probably like a farm pond in the past. They didn't really consider the technical aspects, which the main would be in that the temperature can stratify, and the cold water in the bottom during certain time of year can flip and kill the fish and things that are in it. The aerators bubble up from the bottom and keep that from happening, so that's how we're enhancing it.
Yeah, as far as stormwater, this will be a part of the stormwater retention?
Correct. So we're using this as the stormwater retention for the site. It's already massively oversized for what we're developing here.
So there's capacity there for that?
There's twenty times more capacity than what we actually needed. What we're actually doing, though, is there's currently on the northeast this is the grading plan. On the northeast, there's a whole lot of lines there. That's topography lines for a swell. There's a very deep ditch that's really just kind of holds water all the time down around elevation ten, which is where the current water level is. That ditch flows out. As soon as one drop of water hits that pond, it flows out. So what we're doing is filling that in and putting an outlet control structure on it, so we're going to slow the flow way, way down from what it currently is, and that'll take a lot of the effects off the mosquito control ditch that we currently have. Since we had all of that capacity, actually, we're required to detain a hundred-year storm, but I'm probably detaining a two- or five-hundred-year storm. We're putting a lot more in that just to take some of the effects off mosquito control.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. What is, what is the price for one of these homes?
Currently, these are modeled, the basis of design on this was Crystal Beach Townhomes in Destin. That was a Jeff Prescott Architecture Project. That is currently still the plan on these, to do, that's what the, the basis of the height, the footprints and everything was. Those particular townhomes in Destin, mind you, that's a little different market. Those go anywhere from, I believe, three forty up to the five hundreds on that one. This is obviously a different location. However, we have water on this one, and water views always get premium as well. It, well, it's kind of a mid-level. It's still a townhome, so it's not a six-hundred-thousand-dollar single-family development home like you would get in, in South Walton typically. No, parking's actually in driveways. We do have some street parking for visitors, though, because we didn't, that, we actually didn't have to have that. It was requested by the, one of our planner that was looking at it, that maybe we should consider it. We had space, so we put some visitor parking in.
That road that goes in there on the south side, there used to be an old chicken house or a barn or something right there.
It's still there.
Is that where the road's at, or is the barn on the south side?
Uh, it's basically where the first two buildings on the, on the-
Down here where these driveways are, that's where the barn is.
Gotcha.
Anybody else? You done, or no?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I got someone to sign up. I can't read it. Jimmy Schmidt?
Janice.
Janice Schmidt? Yes, ma'am? Yeah, come up here, please.
My address is two-ten Veterans Road. This development, the entrance, as it's shown on the plot diagram, is going to be right across the street from the front of my house. I'm concerned about the traffic that will be coming and going into this development. From what I can see, that's going to be the only access into the development. There's no other. In a previous diagram that I was, that was sent to me a few months ago, I kind of recall seeing that the entrance was going to be a little further south, almost opposite where the entrance to the Whispering Lake development is, that road, or even a little bit further south.
Right.
But now it seems to have been moved up to right across the street from my house.
Okay.
And I'm concerned. It's, it really got me concerned. I think the development's a wonderful idea, but that entranceway is going to really impact-
Are there other houses next door to you on either side?
The house, let's see, yes. Two-twenty-two is next to me, going north. There is a house on the other side of me, but they face Whispering Lake Drive, so the side of their house will be opposite this development. My house is the first house facing Veterans Road. And, you know, I'm-
Is it right, is, are you just north of Whispering Lake Drive?
Yes.
Okay, so yours is right next to-
Well, Whispering Lake Drive, and then there's a house that faces Whispering Lake Drive.
But you're on the north side of it.
And I'm on the next, I'm behind the next one facing Veterans Road. I'm the first one facing Veterans Road.
Okay.
And according to this diagram, the entrance to this place is going to be like entrance and exit. It's going to be like right across the street from the front of my house. And that's got me concerned. I don't know if there can be any
We will ask-
Adjustment to that.
We'll ask him about that. I mean, I don't know if he can or not. We'll, we'll address it with him in just a minute.
You know, I, I, you know, the extra, I mean, forty-four homes is going to generate like double, maybe even triple the amount of cars coming and going into the place at any given hour of the day. And that's a lot of traffic.
Yeah, but-
And then at night, you know, the night, the night concern of the nighttime is maybe there won't be that many cars leaving the development, but those headlights are going to be shining right into my front windows.
I understand your concern about the traffic.
It's just-
But, but it's about half of what he would be, they would be allowed to put there, so they're not, they're not building everything they could by, by code.
Well, I just, it is what it is.
Yeah.
It's going to, you know, still affect my, my space there, my house, you know.
Well, we'll ask the developer about it and see what he says, see if he can address it.
Another question is, is there going to be any provision? I know you don't make this judgment, but is there going to be any provision at ninety-eight, at the end of ninety, at the end of Veterans Road going on to ninety-eight? I mean, right now, that's a nightmare, just getting out of there with the traffic.
I certainly wish-
Would there be a traffic light there?
That would be up to the state. I certainly wish we had the authority to do something like that.
Who would, who would, you know?
The State Department of Transportation.
Who would apply for that? How do you go about getting a traffic light?
You can actually call the Department of Transportation and ask them to take a look at it. But they're the ones that has to do it.
I mean, I've, I've lived there now for a little over two years, and the increase of the traffic on ninety-eight is-
It gets worse every year.
It's phenomenal, and it's not just because of the, you know, the hurricane damage, you know.
It's worse now, but it's, it's always, I mean, traffic on Highway nine is-
Yeah, and I say with that, I can just visualize the people trying to leave
Right.
that area. The, the cars are going to be backed up, you know, quite a ways.
Right.
So they're going to break to get out on that road.
I know what you mean. That's why I live in Mollsey Head. I don't have no traffic. But, I mean, seriously, that is a state road, and the state controls those access points. You'd have to address that with the Department of Transportation.
Well, is the developer here? I don't know.
He'll answer the questions in just a minute. Once, once you, once you finish, he'll have an opportunity. Ma'am, ma'am.
Oh.
You need to address us?
Oh, okay.
He can hear you, and he will answer once you get done, okay?
Okay, well, I, you know, I just hope he can do something about shifting that entranceway-
He'll have the opportunity to talk about that as soon as you get, as soon as you get done.
To the place. All right, thank you.
Okay? Ms. Bowman?
Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Okay, first, this is just ridiculous. What about stop building, don't you understand? We're overburdened, we're overcrowded, and you've gone way past what the federal government told you to do, okay? We're past forty percent, which means you can't build anything but tiny homes and mobile homes, and I'm talking about homes that actually you can drive away. Because if all those homes in Panama City could have just gotten up and driven away, we would have had no loss of life or property. That is why the Indians said, "Don't build on this land." Okay, so you have this comparison study you did, where you compared this to what's around it, and it matches. Well, that's because it matches things that aren't supposed to be there. None of those thick, developed areas were supposed to be there. So what you've done is you've said, oh, well, this matches something that wasn't supposed to be there in the first place. Okay, so great. The other thing is that that is not a lake. That was a mining operation where somebody actually physically picked up the land and took it away somewhere else in Florida to build their land up higher. It's not, yes, he admitted it's a man-made lake, but it wasn't made with the intention of being a lake. It was a strip mining operation where they just took all the trees and the land and the matter to go build a piece of other land somewhere else higher. Okay, because if this was really a lake, then he wouldn't be able to build that close to it, because that building is like, they've got their feet in the water already, okay? So that's why it can't be a lake, because you can't build that close to it. All right. So now, if you look at the originating deed on this, the person that allegedly sold this land is named Catherine King. She was the clerk of court for like twenty years in the eighties, when all of this fake deedery was going on. And her name is all over these fakes, fake deeds that were passed by Saint Joe, okay? This is part of the Santa Rosa plantation, which means it's in the Atlantic Pensacola Railroad deed, which means it belongs to me. So you can't do anything with it. This is just benign, that he would think that you could build this many people on that little tiny strip of land that's left from, from somebody else's mining operation. I mean, it's just ridiculous. I mean, I know that people want to get rich and wealthy and everything, but what's really going on here is that Saint Joe is trying to get you to bankrupt the federal government. Because if you build a whole bunch of really expensive property, one, that nobody can afford, because every time you build affordable housing, nobody can afford it. But then what happens is people get homeowners insurance on these homes that are just going to be utterly and completely destroyed. We know that's a fact.
You go ahead and wrap it up, okay?
Yeah, so what happens when you have, have all this insurance, and then, and then the insurance companies are insured by the federal deposit insurance company? That's what Saint Joe is trying to do, is trying to get you to bankrupt the federal government. That's what all of this development has been about.
Thank you. Do we have nobody else signed up? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? We will close public comments. Would you like to?
I don't know if you have the ability to do this, but if you can pull up Google Earth, I can show you where that driveway is. The driveway location for that question has not changed in the planning process. It, it was the same before. The, currently, the driveway, we considered the headlights when we actually designed the placement of this. The outbound lane was shifted far enough so that it does not shine into the house. It's, the side of the first house is what it is facing. There's no driveways at that location. So it will not impact anybody's driveway where cars are turning left to go in, or cars are turning right. If she can get that pulled up, we can take a look at that. No?
[laughing]
I, I do have an exhibit pulled up on my phone if you, you guys would like to see it. Kelly and I worked on this at one point. We considered trying to move the driveway to line up with Whispering Lake. Whispering Lake's driveway is currently, this is about the center line. And we, we tried to shift it to closer line up. This is a lot here, and the house is actually here, so that the headlights do not shine inside the house. We considered that. We tried to line those driveways up. The problem is, they don't own that small square parcel of land. They have an existing driveway on that square parcel, and that driveway would conflict, because this is a, this is a massive mosquito control ditch in this location. We actually are having to install a covert that costs pretty close to a hundred thousand dollars, a very expensive covert to rebuild on this, to actually improve the capacity of that covert as well. I didn't share that before, but Public Works and I worked together to be sure. We took the single fifty-two-inch metal covert now that's backing up water on South Walton, and we're putting in a much larger one to handle the capacity that it should have been designed for to begin with. Moving the driveway made, made that complicated, because the covert would not fit before it got to the neighbor's driveway, and then you've got a second party to come into to say you need to add covert on to yours as well. So it didn't fit. Public Works reviewed it as well. We just couldn't make it work. So right now, it's about as far south as we can get it to keep it from shining on any of the houses, and currently, like I said, all the cars coming out will be shining down their driveway and not into the side of the house.
So going, I'm assuming then that there's houses to the north of where this lady lives.
Correct. Currently, she's a little further down, so there's a parcel here and a parcel here. This parcel faces Whispering Lake. Their driveway is, is at this location. This parcel comes out onto Veterans. So there's no conflict. There are a few more houses down in this direction, but it's still within that same corridor of no driveway. The second question about trip are, I was also going to address, we also looked at a turn lane analysis to, possibly for a left turn lane to go in. The reason being is because this section of ninety-eight is way over capacity, and the cost, I don't know if you guys are aware of how all that's calculated, but the cost is different on every section of ninety-eight, and this is a very expensive section, so. Get that, just a second.
Not an expensive easel, though, right?
What's that?
Not an expensive easel, though, right?
It's what, it's what?
Not an expensive easel.
Oh, oh, no, no. So these guys are having to pay a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar proportionate fair share fee on this project for this development. It's a lot for forty-four units. It's way more than we get in a lot of places, but they wanted to put that toward improvements in this location to add it to the project. We unfortunately, there, there are no warrants, and we really had nothing to spend it on, on transportation. We looked at a signal warrant analysis. I actually ran on Highway ninety-eight. It doesn't even show up on the radar. The, the signal warrant analysis is heavily dependent on the trips coming off the minor road. There's a big, long table we look at to begin the eight-step warrant analysis process. It doesn't even show up on step one on the radar, so it's not. A, a turn lane from FDOT would be totally out of the question for them. They wouldn't consider it. It's very similar. This is a similar street, just like Musset Bayou and Don Bishop, a few of those. Those have thousands of homes coming off of it. This one has somewhere around a hundred and fifty. So it's, it's just not going to happen. This one also has a left and right turn lane out of, Veterans onto ninety-eight. It has a left and right turn lane off of ninety-eight into Veterans, so the turn lanes there are as good as they get. So we simply had nothing we could put toward transportation on this project. The that, that actually addressed the third question, which was ninety-eight, so.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for the applicant?
I don't really.
Close public comments, so. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Chair. It just came to my attention just moments ago that there was a notice issued in the mail-out for the next case with the Rose Tower.
The tower?
Yes, that tower.
You're on line.
You're on, you're on. Said five o'clock based on prior time of, time change, so in order to not have a problem to process, they're going to take, and we need to begin.
We will come back at five o'clock.
Okay.
Okay. I think we should get overtime pay.
I do too.
Yeah.
I'll say batteries.
Just maybe we wouldn't deny this one 'cause they made us wait.
You said deny it 'cause they made us wait?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's a good plan. We got one minute. Waiting around for one last item for one more minute.
Sorry, sorry. There's gonna be some tough questions.
Yeah, man.
We've got plenty of time to think about it now, bro. How much, how much radiation and an extra ninety foot?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and reconvene. Yes ma'am?
I'm number five.
You got it.
This is a major development order application submitted by Matthews and Jones, L L P, on behalf of Gulf Power Company requesting to replace a ninety-foot communications tower with a new self-supporting one-hundred-and-eighty-foot tower located on plus or minus one-point-seven-two acres with a future land use of coastal center. This project's located at the southeast corner of Geronimo Street Gulf Power Substation, approximately point seven-five miles south of US Highway ninety-eight on Geronimo Street. And as identified by the, uh, parcel in your packet, I'd like to enter the staff report into the record, please.
Accepted.
This project has went through the zoning board of adjustments for setbacks for the vol- false-owned area for five-point-oh-seven-oh-nine of the land development code. Uh, the, the final order of approval is in your packet that states the specific setbacks for this project. Uh, all other technical comments other than fire have been met. Uh, Sammy verbally, uh, spoke with me at the TRC and approved this project. He didn't see any issues with it, therefore I moved it forward. Uh, we also have letters of recommendation on this project from the sheriff's office, the school board, the fire department, and also the county administration. Um, staff doesn't have anything to offer beyond that, this project.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Alright. Again, I'm, I'm Stephen Tatum, Matthews and Jones. I apologize for holding you guys up. It was completely my fault, I'd like to blame it on the time change, but I don't think that works. I do have a little packet for you guys.
You what?
Alright, I'll try to keep this short and not belabor the point. The, um, first four items you'll see when you get your packet is the letters of support from the sheriff's department, from, um, Walton County's IT department, from the South Walton Fire District, and from Walton County School District. Um, the reason they are supporting this project, the sheriff's department and the fire, or South Walton Fire will be locating on the tower in the future, or reserving space for them, so that if at any point they need a spot to put new equipment, they will be able to do that, and they're very excited about that opportunity, because it's hard to find space on a tower, basically free of charge. IT, Walton County, totally, everybody uses Southern Link, and that's gonna be the main tenant on this tower. Will be Southern Link, and the Walton County, actual government themselves are Southern Link clients, as well as the Walton County School District. To begin with, this is a, as Ms. Bradley said, it's a, uh, new communications tower at, inside the substation, Gulf Power Substation on South Geronimo. Uh, we're creating no new impervious area at all. Basically, we're just replacing a tower that's already there, that's ninety feet tall, with a tower that's a hundred and eighty feet tall. Uh, this is due in part to new technology and also development. Um, the new technology requires we be a little bit taller, um, just need more space and more support strength. And, um, the, the way that stuff is developed on the, down closer to the beach, the condos' signals have been blocked because of the tall condos, signals trying to get around them, so we need a little bit more height. Again, we, you know, have had no, um, no objections from anybody in the community. That entire area on Geronimo is almost turned into an industrial area. I don't know if you're familiar with it or not. But, um, South Walton Utilities has an office directly to the south of where the project is. The north of where the project is is vacant land. To the, uh, east is a church and, um, a sewage treatment plant. And over to the west is a, another church and some offices and some warehouses, some self-storage places. The tower itself, I had to, we had to apply for a variance, I don't know if Ms. Bradley mentioned that or not, but we did apply for a variance, setback variance, and that was unanimously approved. So we have no issues with our setback. Um, aside from that, the, uh, Gulf Power and any, anybody that uses the Southern Link service, including Walton County and the school board, um, and then once the fire department and sheriff's department locate on this, they, they need to have a better service in that area right now, because of the, the dense population down closer to the beach, and then during the summer months, all the visitors that actually come into the beach as well. So you have thousands of people down on the beach, and it's needed for, uh, emergency services and that sort of thing. And likewise, Gulf Power themselves, um, they u- will utilize some of the data that will be provided by the Southern Link service to monitor and keep up with the different equipment, monitor outages and maintenance of the substation and of other power around the area. Aside from that, we have our FAA approval, there's no issues with the height of the tower, it's not any flat paths, anything like that. And, um, if you look in your packet, this kinda goes back to the, the area. The very last item in your packet, it should be stapled together, looks like this. These are what's called photo simulations. Essentially, what we've done is had a contractor go out, take pictures from various spots, six different spots around the area, and then use their CAD system to model what the tower would look like from different spots around the area. So if you look at, like I say, picture number one, that looks like it's at the entrance to Seescape. You can just barely see the tower. Number two is closer to Geronimo and closer to the tower, so you can actually see it. That's on the north side of ninety-eight, looking south towards the tower. Number three, gosh, you can barely even see the tower on number three, that's over, looks like the entrance to Silver Sands. Number four is looking back over the CVS, right there in that area, again, you can just barely see the tower. Um, number five, where is number five located? Uh, that looks like it's on Old Ninety-eight, uh, right at the intersection of Geronimo and Old Ninety-eight. Uh, number six, you can't see the tower at all, and that's down, looks like it's around, maybe, around Whelstail, but closer to Seescape. And the last one is within Seescape, looking back over the golf course. So you can just barely see the tower, any of these, with it being a hundred and eighty feet tall, and that's all within less than a half-mile radius those pictures were taken. Most of them are within a quarter mile. So it's, very little minimal impact, the area that it's in is, um, primarily industrial. It's needed for communications, for public service, safety, um, even for the school board for that matter, if they were to have any kind of emergency, 'cause this, the, the actual signal strength will reach down to Butler Elementary, which is, you know, right at thirty-eight, or thirty-eight and ninety-eight branch off on the west end. So if there were to be any kind of emergency there, you know, they have cell service that's being provided by this tower all the way down at Butler. So, um, if you've got any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Is that, is the tower, it's replacing the ninety-foot there, is it a guide tower, or is it freestanding?
It's freestanding, just like this one, they're both monopoles.
What's the, is the fall radius in that thing a hundred and eighty feet, or how is it?
No, the fall radius is actually designed to be, fall within fifty feet, a fifty-foot radius of the center of where it's set up at.
Okay, yeah.
And it's designed, um-
You read this package you gave you to do that.
Well, I should've covered that. Um, yeah, it will fall within fifty feet, so if it falls to the north or to the east, it will stay within the compound, it will stay within the, the substation compound. If it falls towards the west, part of it could potentially fall on to the Geronimo right-of-way, but it wouldn't even block the right-of-way. And if it were fall, to fall to the south, then it would hit, um, South Walton Utilities, one of their outbuildings there. Um, interestingly enough, South Walton has told us that it's okay for us to say they have no objections to this project at all.
Is there, what is the wind load on that?
It's designed to meet a hundred and forty miles per hour.
We should've had this one, we got our package.
It's designed, uh, to meet a hundred and forty mile-per-hour winds with a twenty-five percent safety buffer in there, I guess you could call it. So any winds within, even exceeding a hundred and forty by twenty-five percent, the tower should stay, but it's definitely designed to a hundred and forty mile-per-hour.
Well, it's interesting, reading that same letter, answers all of Lee's questions, obviously he didn't read it. It is designed where it has breakaway points.
Exactly, it's designed with a weak spot, so it just kinda collapses over like that, as opposed to falling.
That's why you have such a short fall radius.
I'm looking at this, make sure it's not in here anywhere, but did y'all have any of these, or any of these up in the Panama City area during-
Yes, uh, we actually had several towers up, and, um-
Are they still up?
Clay Brogdon is here, he is the, uh, project manager, um, engineer, and, uh, he can talk to you about that if you're interested.
Okay, great. Just real briefly, my name's Clay Brogdon, I'm the manager of engineering for Southern Link. And, um, when Hurricane Michael came through, um, we were co-located on two towers that failed. One by Amer- one owned by American Tower Company, it was a three-legged self-supporting tower. And it failed, and it's in Callaway, Florida, right there where it, it came through. And it failed just as it was designed, it had a weak spot designed in it, and, and I've seen pictures of it, and it just collapsed over like that. It's still standing, it, it just collapsed over like that. The second one was a tower in Frink, Florida, a tall, old guide tower owned by Florida State University. It's for their radio system. And, uh, it, it, it's thirty years old, designed to weigh previous codes, and being eight-hundred feet tall, it, it came down like an accordion, 'cause it had guy wires that were holding it on. Those are the only two towers that Southern Link was located on that had any problems at all.
But they performed like they were supposed to.
They performed just like they were supposed to, yep. Thank you.
Anything else?
Lee, you have any more questions?
I'm good.
Anybody else have anything?
Alright, well-
Thank you. Okay, we only have one person sign up to speak, and that's Ms. Koi Bowman, and I believe she left the building. Uh, anybody else would like to speak on this item? We'll close public comments, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, and I believe that's it.
Thank you.
Just end of turn, thank you. Ah, it's alright. Now, I didn't even click, Karen.
Oh!